Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Berlin Select Board Meeting for Monday, August 29, 2022. It is seven o'clock and I am calling the meeting to order. We'll start off with our regular announcements that meetings of the Berlin Select Board are generally recorded for the transmission on both the Berlin Cable Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice or image and your telephone number may be recorded. Let's start off with the approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the August 22nd open session meeting minutes.
Second.
Good. I think if there's not other conversation, then I will. We're ready to vote. Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
Don't I?
June, is there any correspondence to chat about tonight?
Yeah, the only correspondence that came in would be a notice from or concern from Walter Bickford in regards to the trees that he's seeing out in the in the town, and it has been addressed with Fred Highway Superintendent, and he is in the process of setting up some time with Maddie, our arborist here in town to see what they can do at this point. So it is, we are aware of it and trying to do our best to get to it.
I know when I saw that, I thought we were already doing things, you know, that we are found a bucket truck jointly purchased with Clinton that will give us more resources. We have talked about using ARPA money, but I think Peg, you're right that we wanted to talk to an arborist first to make sure we're not deforesting the town and we're properly prioritizing the trees. So I think as a town, we are taking it seriously and doing things about it. I think every year we've increased even the amount of budget we put towards removing the trees, the gypsy moths and weather have damaged over the last couple of years.
That was it.
Good. I will ask for general public content comments. And that while all that is happening, Victoria has been brought to the front. We did say 7:05. See, that got by me because we did this fast the other day. I tend not to do times on those, but 7:05 will work fine. If anyone had, you know, public comments, they can raise their hands and be recognized. Otherwise, we can start getting ready for Victoria. If we want to kill three minutes, I bet we could do the new business in a three minutes if Chris and Peg, you're okay with that?
Yep.
The IRO Commission held their meeting this past week and they unfortunately Kevin, their vice chair has passed away this past week or the past couple of weeks. And so Deborah is going to be promoted as both a full member and vice chair, Deborah Rolfe, and that Shane Wheeler is willing to step up to be their alternate member, and that they have voted unanimously for those appointments.
So I would make a motion to appoint Deborah Rolfe as a full member and Shane Wheeler as the alternate.
I second it.
Yeah, I think it is great. These people are stepping up and helping out. And I think if there's not more discussion, I think we're ready to vote. Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
Don't I?
See, easy to get that out of the way. Why don't we go ahead and start Victoria and I don't imagine there's a huge volume of people coming in one minute, but if they do, we'll step back and repeat what you just say.
Hi, everybody.
And welcome. It's been a little bit since you've been here. So I don't think I got anything for all, but just updates of things going on and things you'd like us to know about.
Sounds good. All right. All right. So for what's going on with us, I don't have anything too, too big going on, but I just figured give you guys a little synopsis of what what we have going on so far and what we're planning for the rest of the calendar year. So currently between Council on Aging and Social Services, just talking about things generally, we have van rides that are going on. We're still doing medical appointments, grocery rides, and we've started doing a shuttle on Mondays. The Monday shuttle includes going from Northbrook to the library to the Target near the Solomon Pawn Mall down towards Apex. Just to give people a bit of variety, it's been requested. We're looking into two other potential shuttle routes, but we wanted to give this a fair shake to see how it was going to go for us before making any other suggestions. We're still averaging about three to four days a week of van rides. So it's still a very much in-demand service. We're still having our weekly Tai Chi classes, both virtually and in person, and our yoga classes are going to resume in September. I'm still doing take case management for any needs that the town's going to have. We do have our own COVID test kits as well that were given to us by Border Health. So if people are in need of COVID tests, we are distributing them out. We're still doing the Potterhouse News, our latest editions in the printers, and we should be receiving it this week to get it out to mail. We do have our community needs assessment coming in October. That's the one that's through the UMass School in Boston with their Gerontology Institute. We're working with the heads of the program there to do a kickoff to formally start the process. We have requested that the kickoff wait until Kristen gets in and gets settled. So they've they've suggested the beginning of October for that. I believe it's tentatively scheduled for October 5th. So if it needs to be, if it needs to be changed, we have the ability to do so. And then finally, we did get our farmer market coupons through MACH, and they will be good throughout the season. If anybody is interested in getting any farmer market coupons, they can just let us know. There is income guidelines that families have to follow, but usually if you qualify for any public assistance, usually they have all the same benchmarks. So if you qualify for one, you probably would qualify for the farmer's market coupons. So for the rest of 2022 that we have scheduled as of thus far. So I have been working with the with the Police Department Chief Shartner in particular and with a local with a former resident of Berlin, and we're actually looking to get Narinon groups started. Narinon, for those who aren't aware, is basically it's a Narcotics Anonymous group, but it is specifically focused for families and friends and loved ones of a person who is either currently using or maybe in recovery. We were actually approached by a Chief Shartner and I were approached to start a group because unfortunately when the pandemic hit, a lot of the groups, either Alcoholics Anonymous, N A Narcotics Anonymous, or the alcoholic alcoholic equivalent Al-Anon, a lot of those groups did wind up either closing down or they did have to downsize due to COVID. And currently, there's really not any groups targeted towards Central Mass. There is a couple in Worcester, but they're at capacity. So we were approached and we are going to have our provider kickoff meeting on September 15th. And we have a, we have secured a location in town that we can have these meetings where people can, you know, can go to their anonymity and their privacy would be maintained and they can get the support that they need from the group itself. So that's, that's a very big deal and we're excited about that. We are going to have the flu clinic with the Nishoba Boards of Health. We're waiting for updates on that. At this point, they they're currently in transition. The public health nurse that we had for Berlin has given her notice. So we are waiting to have another public health nurse assigned to Berlin, and we are just pending additional information for confirmation of the flu clinic. So once we get that, we'll post it everywhere. We are going to be doing another set of grab and go meals, at least one before the end of the year, and we're targeting October, towards the end of October to get those going. We're just finalizing date and menu. And the van, the COA van is offering transportation for the for the elections, both the primaries and the state election. What we are asking is that if people need transportation for for the sake of voting to give us a call at the council as soon as possible, and what we can do is we're going to have to, we're going to ask for people to be flexible in terms of the time that they that they have, because if we do have any medical appointments or any more urgent appointments, we do have to, we do have to see those through, but we can accommodate and make sure that people can get to the polling centers if they, you know, if they need, if they need any assistance. And then we are also working to get the Twinkle Torah back up and running again for its third year. So so that's what we have on the docket currently, pretty much secured for the rest of the year. And then for in terms of other potential projects that I'm working on is we're, I'm trying to get some mental health webinars going with the town between NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and with the Department of Public Health. I've had webinars with their liaisons and we're just trying to see if we can get some clinics, you know, virtual like webinars or clinics going just so we can hit the masses. They would be information sessions that would be open to teens as well as adults. And it will help us just to again, get the awareness out there for mental health importance and for mental health in general. We're also trying to get more opioid education and harm reduction in Berlin as well. The Nishoba Boards of Health has a partnership with DPH that they've informed us of that there's a mobile, mobile harm reduction clinic that is able to service cities and towns as long as the local municipal board of health has signed off on it. So I'm currently working with SuRigera to get that to get that agenda item put on for one of their upcoming meetings. So we can vote to get that, to get that service in Berlin. It is free. It would not cost the town a dime, but it would allow us to get resources such as testing, some additional like potential Narcan, as well as resources for those who, you know, are looking for treatment for detox, and it would also have a clean needle exchange if it were needed. But again, we're just hoping that we can get that as a potential resource for the town. The COA and myself are going to continue working with the Berlin seniors and you know, we're going to have our meeting next month. So we'll continue to work with them to collaborate and, you know, pitch the ideas to them. And then finally, we're looking at Shine Counseling and for tax prep for seniors. I was scheduled to start a Shine training actually this month, but they had to push the training out past open enrollment. So I'm, I believe I'm scheduled to start that sometime in December. And then tax prep is that we did get a call last at the beginning of the year saying that we had a retired accountant who would be willing to do some tax help for seniors. A lot of the other local cities and towns offer it as well for those on a fixed income. So that's, that's pretty much what I have right now for what we're looking at for for Council on Aging and Social Services side, and I just wanted to see if any of you had any questions.
Victoria, thank you for when I reached out to you about articles for the item, all the things that you mentioned, grab and go tax. A couple of other things. Bilbo, my goal is to get that into the item tonight. So for those watching, if you know COVID tests, so for those watching tonight, pick up an item this Friday and all that information will pretty much be reiterated from Victoria.
Thanks, Peg.
You betcha.
Chris, any questions?
I can't think of anything. I've been to most of the COAs meetings. But I appreciate all that you're doing, Victoria, for with the Police Department and the Council on Aging.
Yeah, the Social Services side, it's definitely gotten a bit more of my time. So and that's, you know, it's to be expected. I usually get notified by both EMS and police if there's, you know, if they have certain cases or things like that, that they need assistance on. So you know, it's, it's a, it's a necessity at this point. So.
Is.
I'm sure also.
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay.
I was gonna say, Victoria, is there any possibility to work with neighboring towns? I mean, there's only one of you, you know, and I don't know how many Clinton Boylston, Marlboro, North Grove, throw in another town that's on our border. There any possibility for, you know, a continuum where you're on a call, you're tied up, you've got an additional resource to, you know, to call from another town?
I think at this point, a lot of the cities and towns are still using agencies, mental health agencies on an on-call basis. So I know Chief Shartner and I have talked about it. He, we are going to be having our upcoming provider meeting for the Narinon where he's, I think, reaching out to some of the local police chiefs as well. And that is something that we've been talking about is if we, you know, if we do have something that comes up, I mean, I, I wouldn't say like I'm getting bombarded at this point, but I am getting, you know, more and more involved and I'm, I'm definitely working with more families. So I think it's definitely something we can, you know, push forward to in the future. I am trying to get into one of the trainings that Chief Shartner had recommended. I attended Psychological First Aid earlier in the year, and there's another training, I believe, coming up in October. I'm going to try to get into. And I do sit in with the local, there's a, there's a clinicians group that the Department of Mental Health organizes, and it's basically for like the jail diversion program. And I do attend their meetings and I do get like their resources and stuff like that, too. So I am slowly getting more and more into like the regional and state resources for the social services side of things. It's just, I think, going to just be a matter of time.
All right. Well, keep us posted. Let me let us know how we can help.
Absolutely.
Hey, it's great. I think those are great updates. Victoria, I'm hoping people who are watching this also find it quite educational. Glad we found a way to squeeze you in every now and then because there's just so much going on at the Council of Aging and the Social Service stuff you're doing that people really should be aware of. So.
Yeah, and and my thing to the public is just if you ever have a question, big or small, there's no such thing as a stupid question, please ask. Unfortunately, our systems are not user-friendly and even I get thrown at times. And I mean, I've seen a mass health application. I can't tell you how many times and I still get thrown. So unfortunately, like I said, the systems can be very complicated. And, you know, we know as you know, the summer starts to end and we head towards fall, you know, mental health cases just go up on the rise, and we just want people to know that, again, you know, we're here, you know, if there's anything that you think you can need, or if there's any questions that you have, you know, I'm always here and willing to listen. So do what we can.
I did, I did speak with a friend of mine who was wondering how you put in an application to Northbrook Village.
Send them my way. But because, so each Northbrook has its own technical application because one is owned by that new company, I believe, that in New Hampshire. And then there's the one for Northbrook, too. So I can send you with the resources that I have. I had, when it was the old company for Northbrook, when I did have an application, but I haven't gotten a new one yet since the management changed, but I can at least send you the information I have for Northbrook, too.
Okay, I did give her your name, too. So you may hear from her.
Fair enough.
Yeah, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, great. Thank you very much, Victoria, for coming. It was always good seeing you and you're doing some incredible stuff for the town here.
Thank you, guys. Good to see you as always.
You too. Be safe. Take care.
Thank you.
And so June, a brief town administrator report for today?
Um, I do. Unfortunately, it's very brief. Pretty much, we are continuing to work on the request or the procedure that we're going to use as far as requesting departmental assistance. I'm also in the process of working with Margaret to try to put all the projects together so that hopefully we'll have a nice little list for Kristen when she does come in. So that way there, it, it isn't quite as overwhelming. So we are still working on that, trying to get a lot of the curements. Hopefully, it will be really at a good place when Kristen comes in. And just to throw in a little bit from the accountant side of things, we are in the process of doing the year-end closings and hopefully be able to start working on the recap sheet and getting the tax rate ready to go. And hopefully we'll have new updates at your next meeting for that. That's pretty much it.
June, are we going to be able to both schedule-wise and money-wise be able to schedule time of Margaret to meet with Kristen a little bit, to hang things off as well?
Um, I think at this time, and this is only my opinion, I did talk to Margaret a little bit today about it. I'd like to have Kristen take a look, see, talk to us, see where she stands. Margaret is definitely willing to assist Kristen in any way that she possibly can. I think it's going to be up to Kristen as far as how much she wants Margaret to be here. I mean, it's always nice to have assistance, but if Kristen is, has her own way of doing things, Margaret definitely does not want to, you know, step on any toes or anything like that, but she is here. And I would say probably once Kristen and Margaret talk a little bit, maybe they can decide if it's going to be something that is time-consuming, I guess, is the way to put it. Like I said, Margaret is willing to help, but if it's, it's going to be a lot of a regular basis on helping, I would definitely like to seek some sort of compensation possibly for her, maybe, but.
Actually, as much as a knowledge transfer, as much as stuff, especially things that are currently in progress, like, you know, things that might not necessarily be on paper yet. But yeah, just keep us, keep us posted. Because I agree that if it turns into a bigger thing, she should be compensated for it.
Yep, absolutely.
Chris, Peg, do you have questions? Go for it, Peg.
I lied. I'm sorry. I said that I wouldn't have any questions, but I promised to God I'll make them brief. Last week, you sent out a year-end closing list. There were quite a few committees and commissions and people on that list that you basically gave them till what, Friday today? How was the progress on that? And are there still delinquent people out there?
I have to say, I was overwhelmed today with the amount of paperwork that did come back in. So I'm my fingers are crossed and most people heard what I said as far as what I sent out. And even if people were not able to drop off their year-end paperwork, I got an email that said things were okay, or this is a problem, and I promise I'll be in tomorrow. So I'm hoping we'll be in pretty good shape.
So second question, you know, Peg's fun weird thing to do is to go down and look at the warrants and go through them and see what's going on with the town. And I noticed that the number of errors are diminishing for accuracy of time and of cost per hour. I don't know if this is a you question, or maybe it's a Dennis question. But where are we in terms of the new payroll? I think we spent like a significant boatload of money to bring that in to hopefully alleviate some of these issues. So I was just kind of curious. If you hadn't updated, if not, no, then I'll bug Scott to throw Dennis on an upcoming agenda and we can ask him.
Currently, right now, we didn't throw in a lot of money towards this. We were just hoping that we could actually make it so it was more computerized as far as tracking of the benefit part of it. As of right now, I don't believe it's in. I think Dennis is holding off another month or two. We can, I can double check with him again, based on the fact that we had a number of departments not keeping track of this or the amounts that they had were a little bit off. And I'll be perfectly honest with you, Amy and I have not had time to go back and reconstruct things to double check on them. So unfortunately, it is on hold at this point until we can find some time to sit down and reconstruct some of the items.
Okay.
It's not what I want to hear either, but it is what it is.
I know, and I'm grateful that you and Amy take the time, obviously, to go through and, and, you know, double check, but it doesn't, it's, it's a little frustrating as I'm sitting there going page over page and I see scratch out hours, scratch out rate, scratch out amount, scratch out down there. You know, it's just kind of, I mean, as I said, they're less, but I don't think in my, however many years I've been here, I've ever seen a warrant go through that was completely clean.
It's been a while.
Payroll errors. Yeah. Okay. Well, something to keep an eye on. I'll bug you later, Scott.
And then, right, well, I just put for the agenda for the 26th, that it might not be on the 26th, but I just at least put a note that we should invite Dennis to talk about the payroll implementation. If that becomes a full agenda, we might push off a week or two, but at least now in the regularly in front of my eyes when I, when we do agenda setting. So so let's get on to old business then. The MRI agreement to hire the next fire chief, I sent out to the other select board members. Maybe later than I thought, because I thought of it last Monday, it turned out I might not have. But I got out to you the the MRI proposal. Do we want to go over it to see if there's things there, proposals to do that list of 19 items for 13, five with an optional 20th item that I think we could even wait on until further to the process. Whether or not we wanted to add another 1500 to do sort of a comprehensive background check like they are, like they did for Kristen. And let's see if I can do this appropriately. And share. Did that share? Look at that. And so this is the list. I don't know if we want to just sort of do a page. Do we have questions? Are the things we think we can try to do ourselves? If we're thinking we're doing ourselves, who do we think is doing it? But I know that my intent is to try to make sure this process sort of goes at a decent pace. I don't feel a need to like make it go super fast, but I also don't need it to drag out.
Scott, as far as number one goes, at Personnel Committee meeting last week, the job description for the chief was handed out and they are going to take a look at it. Chief Clark actually looked at the job description, the current one that we have, and he's made a couple of suggestions to it.
We, we also have, or I got ahold of the ideal candidate profile that we had in 2019, which I can pass along to you guys. And I also have gotten a copy of the ad from 2019, which I believe is number five.
Can we cut out two? Because I think with the HR study that was done, we have a pretty good idea of what salaries are around the area. So I'm thinking that two can probably come off and four, you know, if June said Personnel and Chief are working on it, four can go as well.
Yep.
Can we? Does anybody have the old timeline that we had for our previous search? I mean, can we look at that and just plug in new dates?
I'm not sure. You know.
That might be something you may want them to do just based on the new timelines that we're having, because I know on other areas of job openings that the process is starting to take a little longer. Just to find qualified candidates. So that's something you want them to update.
Actually, sometimes I think it needs to be a little shorter. The longer you wait, those people who applied earlier are going to apply for seven other jobs, and best ones are going to be hired by the time we get to them. Sort of one of the things we do with the town administrator, I was really happy that we did a relatively fast process, and we even did some internal adjustments to have extra meetings so that we could interview our top three candidates and not have them tired away before we got a chance to do it.
Six and seven seem the same to me. I mean, they're going to look at their update, at their database and then reach out to people. I mean, why else would you look at your database if you weren't going to reach out to people? So.
Six is research database, seven is looking at professional networks. There's people who are not in their database.
Regardless, I don't think that that's going to reduce the cost much anyway. And, you know, I was thinking about this, the only thing that concerns me is that maybe we should run our idea about what we need to cut past Kristen.
Well, except Kristen doesn't really start till the 16th. This is the, the problem I think we're in is that if she doesn't look at this until the 16th, and we don't sign this until after the 16th, the process won't start till October. And, and when they say it's four months, it's going to be February or March before we get a new fire chief. I'm trying to hope, I'm trying to see if we can find a way to cut a month off of it. I think we could end up signing this in some of the details of some of these pieces. My she, I think she'll have a great chance, like even who the hiring committee might be and what to do with the finalists. Because if we at least got the job description out there and the jobs posted, the resumes start coming in. I think if we get to that point by the time Kristen starts, then like, you know, what she thinks is the right personality that fits with both her and the town and, and the hiring committee she wants to put together, I think are, are.
The only, the only thing is, though, I don't think we can decide tonight about some of these. I, if I send you the ideal candidate profile and the ad, you know, there are going to be things we need to change ourselves. I mean, it may be that we can just change it ourselves, I'm assuming. So I suppose then it's, you know, I just don't know, you know, it just depends on, I guess, how quickly we're doing this and if it's the right thing to do to move. It just depends on, I guess, how quickly we're doing this and if it's the right thing to do to move so quickly.
I don't think any of the items that we talked about, you know, one is in process. Two, we can, we know, three stays, four, you know, goes, we, you know, we reuse five. You know, so there's a number of of items that I think that we can, I don't, I, Scott, I don't want to wait. Until Kristen gets here, because then the longer we wait, then that means the longer that we're going to have to keep Chief Clark. You know, which is an additional cost to the town, so I think we need to.
Or design a whole new interim process, like we were sort of limping along interims in TA. I'd like us not to have to limp along for several months with an interim sort of, you know, fire chief.
Yeah, and I I I agree. I I also was thinking today about. How long his waiver is? Was it one year? Because I think his birthday is in May. Well, I mean, hopefully, we we're all set by then, but.
I I thought we did like a three-year waiver to give us that flexibility.
I think it was up to age seventy, yeah.
Yeah, I thought we did three or five years, knowing full well there's no, the way he wanted to do it that long, but allowed us to. Not be under a, oh, my goodness, if we don't do this in three months, it's going to kill everything. And so at eight, you know, they'll hold the resumes and confidence and come up with semifinalists. I still think it's a good thing to do, because as they point out, it will probably increase some people who are willing to more confidentially apply. If it instead had to be sort of a public record for us to do. I think once of the semifinals, I think that's as much going through Kristen and. Whatever hiring committee we and she put together at that point, because I think by the time we get to eight, she is on board. And so, and and that's where nine and ten is, is no work for the town administration, it's like part of the applicant pool, the level of qualifications and demographics. Screen the first round of screening resume, resumes.
Go ahead.
As I was going to say, when they talk about ten meter and a slight port again, and I I think much of this falls to the town administrator, because it is. The town administrator's higher of the fire chief, not necessarily our higher of the fire chief. But but then I'm fine with the wording, because we can work out how much we're helping her out with that, or how much she wants help from us in that.
I think we we do have to vote to approve who she brings forward.
Like we do for all hires.
Yep, well. Department heads, I think.
Do we have the list of people who are on the last committee, so at least we can get an idea? Of who we tapped, you know, so we don't start from scratch and, well, let's do this one, let's do that one.
You remember the last. MRI search for a fire chief?
No, that's why I'm asking if somebody, if somebody has to have the list of who the people were that we picked.
I'm I'm sure Mary probably has a a list. But I remember that. Wasn't it? I know George Pendergast was on it. And some of the others. I, you know, I can't come to mind, but.
And I know Margaret pulled out of her hat some people that weren't affiliated with the town at all, so they were looking. Truly just at the person and the resume and not, oh, he's a friend of a friend of a buddy of somebody who fixed my door, you know, type of thing.
And I think that's something, we make sure that we get to Kristen and she can put together the higher committee that she thinks works well.
With our help, I'm sure she's going to need some help if she doesn't know anyone.
But, you know, they're going to help with coming up with some of the questions. They're going to conduct some of the original help with some of the original interviews to work with the screening committee. You know, fifteen is the semifinalists. They're going to do the assessments. Do we, do we feel they need assessments?
I think, didn't they do them? I think they do, they can do like an abbreviated. Assessment. I'm not sure, but. I think we had one candidate that came in late and they did an abbreviated assessment for that person.
This is sort of the things they're looking for in exercises. And again, no one's going to, you know, be the world's greatest expert in all A through K, and so it's going to help us sort of figure out what the basket of. You know, strengths and weaknesses, we think best matches both what else we have in town and. And. And and what they can bring.
I'm just trying to go through all the email and see if I can find. Emails on who we, who we picked, just to get an idea.
I don't know how much we need them to develop the the employment contract number seventeen.
More than likely, I think last time I might have done it.
Right, and we have the previous ones to look at. We have town council a little bit and.
Town council will, should always have have it run by.
Right, run by, but I I don't think it's going to be that difficult to bring in. We couldn't do it. You know, we are hiring a town administrator who's been a HR manager for their, her town. By the time we get to seventeen, she will have been here at least a bit of time. Because again, I don't even think the resumes will all be collected by the time she starts. Again, I just want to make sure the process has gotten started. So maybe we can pull seventeen from the list too.
Yeah.
I mean, eighteen's an if statement, and I don't think it's a likely if statement.
Eighteen's what?
Eighteen is an if statement, you know, help coordinate the family visit if they come from a great distance.
I don't even think that, did, did we even use them when Margaret came on board though for that? No.
No, because I wasn't going to, but like, we had several. Town administrator candidates that were coming from out of state. They didn't make the finalist cut, but there were some in the original mix. So I thought we had twenty-one applicants and sixteen were from Massachusetts, which meant, you know, five of them were not.
I don't even know whether we need nineteen, but.
You know, I think the as desired makes it likely, that likely, and then twenty, I think is an optional thing that we could pull. At the end of, nearer the end of the process, but decides that we want to involve twenty or not.
That that we did do for Margaret.
We did do for Margaret. I don't know how, if it's as important for a fire chief as this is a town administrator.
Well, I remember talking to Margaret about it, and she said that she would not. Give that up. She thought that that was important.
Peg, your feelings about twenty?
They go through a quarry and a sorry check. Anyways, so I I don't know what. Fifteen hundred dollars or fifteen fifty is going to find that those two checks that go back ten years aren't going to find. So I, I know, I'm, no, it's near twenty.
I think, I think no, and twenty at least for now, and if we think there's something towards the end, we can always add it in. For some reason, we have an inkling that we want to double check on it.
Well, it might be something that, that's one of those things that we might be sorry we didn't do at some point. I mean, I I think the booklet that we got was about, you know.
I know.
Three quarters of an inch thick.
It was, it was quite the read.
Yes.
I felt I I felt invading privacy as I read it. I think it's safe to say, not that, that it was, it was all very positive stuff and very clear stuff, and it was easy to follow and.
And that might be one thing you want to check with Kristen on too.
I have to say, as far as the extensive background check, we would be better off, I would say, spending that money. Because it's that one time he didn't do it and we had an issue that it could really come back and bite us also, but.
That's, that's what I'm trying to say.
And so if I, if I have my notes and hopefully Mary, you're, you're getting some of this as well, is that. Some respects, we think one is greatly shrunk, because we already have the job analysis and job description sort of already done. We have an ideal candidate profile that we're going to reuse from two thousand nineteen that we potentially, they could do a little bit of tweaking on. But it's not like they're running it from scratch. That, two, I think we're going to ask to cut out entirely. We sort of have a budget number that we're going to advertise this at. And that. Or. We're also going to cut out. That five, we think it's not a big thing, because we already have some ad copy from previous ones. But we're still looking to them to. Recommend the advertising menus and coordinate the placement of the ads, correct?
Yes.
And then the only other one that we thought. Might sort of just come out in its entirety is seventeen.
Seventeen and eighteen. I mean, think about it, if, if you're even applying for it, for me, if you're applying for a job, you got to go figure out, you know, the community, so I.
I I also believe that for some reason we have a candidate that is that. Let's say I asked them to cut these things out, the price comes down a little bit. I'm sure we can always at some point say, hey, this turns out to be something we want. What does it cost to add it back in? Because they'll, they're a consulting company. If we wanted something more to be consulted, and I'm sure they will sell us the service.
Well, you know, and and we may have someone who's lives. Quite a distance away, because I think there is some kind of a requirement, is there not, for. A fire chief to be.
Thirty minutes, I think.
Yeah, we had the last candidate that we were going to hire, which ended up dropping out even after we got the contract.
I think, Chris, we all got muted in there.
How did we all get muted?
I think so. Yeah, someone hit a button. We all got muted.
Oh. Okay, so. Did you hear anything I said?
We got pieces of it.
You know, it may be, I'm not saying that MRI should be doing this, but it may happen. That's what I'm trying to say.
And so I think what I I I am hearing from you folks, that what I'll do is I'll go back MRI with these sort of changes. We should put on our agenda, I didn't look it up unless someone else can look it up. Is we wanted to pull out the salary range, and so do we know the salary we want to advertise?
I think if we go back to personnel, they should be able to pull that information for us from their study.
And I can also look at the new survey that they're posting now out on the webpage, so.
Do you want to do the negotiations, Scott?
With with MRI?
Yes.
Yes, I can, I can keep doing that. I've been talking with Brian. I have his number. You know, I've exchanged a couple emails. I can continue to do that.
Okay, well, if you need anything, I, you know, don't mind helping out.
Right. Where do we want to go? So we could, I I see two potential paths, and I'm sort of fine with you. The one is, one, I take these note back. And I come back with a revised one at our September twelfth meeting that we can vote on. You can, but you can, we could vote on it with the changes, but we won't know how much that potentially saves us. But know that at least it's probably some savings and probably not substantial. I don't think that, I bet with this, that we're not going to go down to like five thousand. I bet we're still above ten, but probably below thirty. We're probably in the ten to twelve range. It would be my wild, out of my pocket. Let's see something else, I guess. And we could vote with some of the changes. Do either of you have a preference?
Do you want to talk with them first and then come back to us?
I can do that, because again, my goal is to get this partially done by the time Kristen gets here. And if we're voting on a contract on the twelfth, I think we're still well for the line, because at least we're not starting with Kristen with this document and. And and other stuff, and so I'll come back in the twelfth then with something a little bit with, uh, honed in.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I think that leaving. Twenty is something we're not sure about just yet. I think that would be.
I'll leave twenty as an optional that we can declare later on in the, later on.
Okay, sounds good.
Because I let Kristen have a say in twenty as well then at that point.
Yeah.
Okay, Chris, you want to get me what you have, the the community profile and any ad stuff you had?
I can send that to you.
If you find anything, Peg, that's great too. And I'll see if I, I I might, I'll at least look at our budget and and June and see if you get the salary survey so that we vote on the twelfth. We have a, and we would like to advertise it about this salary.
Now, like, I'm out on the MMA website. I can tell you what Dartmouth, they're looking for a fire chief, what they're posting. And also Amesbury, what they're posting, way far apart.
Yeah.
Do you want that information now?
Sure, I'll write it down if you do it to me now.
So Dartmouth is between eighty-five and ninety-five. And Amesbury is a buck fifty to a buck sixty.
I wonder if there's like Bennys in there that make a little difference too, but but that gives us at least a little bit of a range. Okay. I'll stop sharing, so I can go back to my notes.
I'm absolutely certain that MRI will give an opinion if we tell them salary range, tell us if we're off or not.
Yes, they will.
Look at this, I'll share again. So, next topic, coffee talk.
I have a question before we move on MRI. Are there any potential? Job openings that are coming up for people in town that we need MRI for, or is it really, we just need them for fire, police and TA?
I I believe I I spoke with Mary this afternoon when I went in to. Sign the warrants and we do not.
The other thing that we should probably talk about before we move on is, let's say it is ten thousand dollars. Do we have a sense of where we want that money to come from? Because I don't know, I don't know how much we got of the budget planned for it.
There was anything anywhere in any of it, but I'll have to take a look, see what we can come up with and. Because we're going to need this money before we sign.
Yeah.
There will also be. A cost, a small cost for, say, for example, they have interviews at supper time, you know.
Well, it adds.
And adds, yes.
My my inclination, and it's an inclination, not anything more, is just to use ARPA dollars for it.
Or a reserve fund transfer?
ARPA dollar is over a reserve fund transfer. But again, that is my gut, and I'll probably spend some more time looking at spreadsheets and some finances stuff. And and when June is not totally focused on the year ending or the world ending, depending on how she's feeling that day. She might have an opinion too about which one might be the best, and it's probably worth us listening to that as well.
Yeah.
And so just think on the twelfth, when we vote on a contract, we probably should, you know, also vote on where the money is coming from. Coffee talk. I don't think we formalized, we we said we kind of want to do it in hybrid. I think we're looking at hybrid at the. Large meeting room at the end of the hallway. Is that something we can reserve? Oh, six thirty.
I do believe so.
On the twenty-second? Thursday?
Yeah. And although we do little addy things, it will not be this document, but I've been using this as the sort of placeholder. And so we talked about as an agenda item. Not well formatted, the Board of Health, talk about the mattress recycling program and the container and the process. See if we can get Paul to come and talk about that. Peg, you had three things for the police chief to talk about, and my notes have two and a line for the third one. So somehow I have spaced with the third one. If you remember, which part of data for the speed signs, you wanted drones. What was the other? Made up staffing.
Staffing, data. Ah, I rattled them off last week. I'll have to go back.
Yeah, I might just. It might be easier for me to just go back and watch the select board meeting. Um, uh, but but anyway, uh, having, uh, the police chief come for that. Uh, and then having the fire chief, uh, do a presentation about the advanced life support study and some of the pros and cons. And getting people's questions about that piece of it, and then an introduction of the new town administrator. Um, I've sort of put my total made up the amount of time, uh, for each one of these, thinking, of course, that we probably have sixty to ninety minutes of. Especially people who are on Zoom before, uh, they start zooming out or or zoning out. Um, and so trying to see how we, if we, like, what the evening might look like. And I think we're okay because we still have some time for some of these to go a little long. And some of them and still have some questions for either us or some of the people presenting. Um, I was not supposed to meet as time certain for any other presentation. So if someone went long or someone went short, we didn't have to like kill time until the next person spoke. Um, although I might just like this, we're expecting it to be about, um, and and that, uh, the next one goes on, the next one goes on.
Scott, the other one that I had for police was the communications.
Oh, yes, radio towers.
Yep. And then with the drones I had slash car.
Oh, yeah.
And maybe we bring Kristen up to the top of the list and not leave her for last.
See, I think she's the keynote, the 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 big bang to end with. Yeah. It's weird because I almost want to like introduce her at the beginning of who she is and why she's there and then let her do a spiel at the end. Um, uh, but I have no problem moving her to the front. I think she's the big draw, although all of these are important. But I also think, Peg, if like at this meeting, we we agree on this part of it, and the location allows when you write the something, where we for the item. You have something solid to go on that we have voted on. So it's not like Peg thinks this is gonna be what's happening.
Yeah, no. And the last one that I wrote, um, I mentioned Kristen and said, hey, stay tuned. We're gonna have a coffee talk in September, more to come. So, uh, I won't put it in this one that goes out this week, but. Uh, let's see. So if it's the twenties, my calendar. So if it's the twenty second, it needs to go back to the item the week of the twelfth. Uh, because if I put it in the nineteenth, who cares? The meeting's already over. So we've got a couple of weeks to tighten.
Yeah.
Tighten things up.
Right, confirm the location, confirm what Zoom link we're ready to use, because this is our standard one that's listed here, and we paid for a wrong one. Um, but I'm using the agenda shell so we can keep our notes going. Um, and then we'll work with, uh, Mary, apparently I view that same week of the twelfth, uh, get it on the Facebook and the. Uh, Twitter's and the universes of whatever else we have for social media out there. Um. I know you're busy, June. Maybe, June, you want me? I can send an email to Paul and the chiefs just, uh, confirm their availability. Up your new to June.
That's up to you. Um, I mean, that should be something that's pretty simple. I can just throw that out, so.
Um, okay, watch this. If you could throw it out, I think the sooner we just give a short little, like, hold the date, make sure you're available. Uh, if they're not, we can then try, like, you know, Paul can decide anybody from the Board of Health. He doesn't want to do it. Does Sue want to do it? Or is there someone who like, I don't even know who wrote the the grant who wants to do that?
It was Sue Regera.
Yeah, Sue, yeah. Okay. I think we're in good shape.
Um, do you didn't have anything on there for highway? Do you want highway to be present at all or not this one?
I don't think we had. I mean, I'm sure they could say things, um, but I don't think there's an agenda item for them. I don't think Fred needs to be there.
Um, when is the next coffee talk after this one?
Not a clue.
Christmas, December.
Yeah, we tend to skip that.
Quarterly.
I think we skipped December. Maybe it's not till January.
January.
It's not. It's gonna be January-ish to to then the next one being April, right for for town meeting.
Okay, then just to mention, uh, I mean, I hate to, you know, here we are September. I hate to say. Bye bye, Fire Chief, because he's still gonna be with us till December. But, um, I think that, you know, we just want to make people aware that he is still with us till December.
I was thinking as as part of, I wasn't gonna make it a formal agenda, but as part of his presentation after his presentation, say that, you know, he has. Put in a notice, we will likely have a little bit of a hiring process put together at that point, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, that that he's served us well, but he's still going to be here for several more months. And maybe there's a, there's a small chance he's even here until the January coffee talk because the the timing of the new hierarchy, maybe agree to put it another week or two if if we need him.
Yeah.
I don't want to count on that because the perfect universe will hire. They start January first, and everybody is all happy.
Yeah, I don't know what the general, um, timeframe is for a fire chief to move from one, you know, how much notice they have to give their presence.
Right, and some of it might even depend on what they what they're doing right now, you know.
Right, exactly.
Some reason a fire chief in a bigger town who wants something that's more hands on because they're tired of doing paperwork, they might have to put in a. Uh, a bigger notice than, uh, you know, team lead somewhere might have to put in.
Right.
So Scott, it triggered a thought. When you're talking to MRI, you've got to throw in ALS because that could definitely, that could change, you know, our. Our fire chief person to, you know, behind the desk versus.
Right, and so what what I was going to do is is when I got Chris's, uh, uh, community profile, sort of what we're looking for, I was gonna mention to them. That we are in the process of evaluating ALS. And so at least the new chief's opinion about ALS is probably gonna be.
Yeah.
Important part of the hiring process. And and it could be even dangerous to the applicant, not dangerous, you know, but the applicant, you know, we will have people, the three of us will have potentially five different opinions about ALS. Um, and so a chief candidate that has an opinion that, you know, aligns one direction or another. Uh, might be, but someone who can at least intelligently talk about it will be important.
Yeah.
Because the new chief will have, the new chief will have to defend either going to ALS or not going to ALS. Because I have to defend whatever the decision we end up making as a town and be able to talk about it intelligently about why that decision is the right one for our town.
Or what determines that it's the right thing for us.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Uh, let's stop looking at the agenda for the twenty seconds so they can remember what we're doing today. Uh. Uh, I'm assuming, June, there's no staff appointments that we need to talk about tonight?
We do not, but, um, I do want to throw out that there will be, um. Looking for your approval on hopefully some new job descriptions for restructuring. Um, that I meant to bring forward today, but I I did not. So that will be on the next next meeting also.
And although I'm not planning to, there's a small chance of coffee talk, there'll be some quick vote if there was an appointment for a position or something that we could do relatively quickly that speeds things along. I'm sure we'll just slap it on a quick agenda. Uh, uh, board questions, comments, layers on updates. Chris, Peg?
If to, um, June, while you're here, so the recent hirings that we've had. Who, besides Tom Bradley, who was the other person that we hired as labor driver?
Um, Brendan.
Um, Cabrel. What?
Cabrel.
Cabrel, C A B R E L?
Yes.
All right. Uh, took care of one. And all right, please, check that off. Um, and if I've missed somebody, you know what? Since these are gonna be a more regular monthly things, we'll we'll catch up. Uh, I will apologize later. Uh, wanted to talk about, uh, the Woo Sox, Mr. Fuller. Um, he reached out to Chris and I, and it seems that he does not want to talk to us individually, but would rather talk to us as one. So I told him that we were meeting tonight, that I would throw it out there, see if we could have a date. Uh, I don't know if he's gonna want to talk in front of the select board. I would prefer that he does instead of, you know, the three of us getting together because then we have to post a meeting.
So, right, so I can tell you, I've gone back and forth them, uh, several times. That he, if he meets with us as a group, it has to be at a select board meeting, uh, in public, because we, the three of us are not allowed to talk about town business, you know, in private. Um, and so when I schedule it for the meeting, he says, oh, no, we should meet in private. I'm like, we can't meet in private. Uh, do you want to do a meeting? He's like, yes, let's do a meeting. I was like, okay. And he's like, no, I don't want to meet at a meeting. I want to meet with you individually. That's why I sent him the contact so he can meet with us individually, and then he reaches out now, wants to meet again in a meeting. Um, I don't think we're time sensitive anymore because it won't be for this season anyway. And so we're talking in the spring. And that will give you time to figure out if he wants to meet with us individually or at a select board meeting because, again, it's an open meeting violation for us to meet with him privately. Now, that said, if he really wants to try to coordinate like, uh, a meeting of town leaders where you can talk to them over. It doesn't take a select board action to do that. He can meet with any one of us individually, could decide to, uh, organize a small gathering. Uh, uh, to talk about what the the townies be down, you know, what they could do for the town or what the town can do potentially for the Woo Sox.
Okay, all right, I will, uh, I'll reach back to him and, uh. Let him know he's got, take an option, come to the board, or you talk to us individually, one or two. There are no, there's no plan C.
Do you? You have a problem, Peg, if you were chosen to be the one to speak to him?
No, I'll wear my hat.
Yeah, I I have no problem with it because I've tried a couple of times. It don't seem to be getting the direction I think is being productive. So maybe Peg will have.
I guess like, uh, you know, she's ready to go. She.
I'm ready to go. Oh, God, look at my hair. Um, yeah, no, I'll reach out to him and see what he wants to do, and then I'll just report, uh, back to you guys whenever we meet.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, uh, Agriels and Commission met this past week. I didn't make the meeting, but I was able to watch the video. We obviously had they had appointments to do on. Their meeting wasn't really long. Uh, they're working on getting their, uh, the tiller fixed. Uh, the neat news, what I thought at least was neat news is that, uh. The, uh, people sort of borrowing permanently vegetables that came from other gardens was actually not a big problem this year. And, uh, and so that seems to have, I'm subsided a little bit. They are still working on some security measures to help continue to keep it to be a a safe and decent place.
Borrowing, borrowing, you have.
Uh, I was using nice words.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Apparently, currently borrowing things that do not belong to you.
Give it a few more weeks because the butternut squash is just starting to come out in people's gardens, and that's usually when the butternut squash grows wings and flies out the gate, so. You know, we'll see what happens, but you know, everyone's vigilant down there. We all know who's down there, uh, you know, so.
How's your garden looking, Peg?
My garden is good. Unfortunately, uh, it's just about dead. I'm waiting for my last eggplant to come through and like my last cucumber. Uh, we have until. Indigenous Day in October to pull it up, but I'll probably start the process within the next couple of weeks and just get everything done.
Um, uh, historical continues to meet a couple of times a week. Um, I did reach out to them. They're gonna talk at this week's meeting about what, uh, what timing they think is. Is right over the next month or two to come and present something to the select board and and. Uh, uh, take any questions. That said, if there are questions, uh, or commentary anyone wants individually, people either watching. Uh, or otherwise, they're they're welcome to reach out to, uh, June, uh, not accountant June, but June Miller from the, uh, Chair of the Historical. To offer those questions or thoughts, yes. Um, other questions for tonight? Commentary? Thanks, everyone, for, uh, agreeing to this, uh, not formally scheduled, but three weeks between meetings felt a little long. So. Uh, next Tuesday, for everyone watching, of course, is, uh, a primary day. We encourage everyone to go vote. The polls are open from, oh, I don't know the times off the top of my head.
So seven, seven to.
I don't know.
I don't know. So you're all guessing. You should look it all up. Uh, there are some times you can, or there you can still vote early because. Early voting has already started, um, and, uh, and we encourage everyone to vote. Um. There are not other announcements? A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, I think we're then ready to vote. Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Stone Eye.